Okay, we're recording.
Thank you. Good evening. It's August 18th, 2025. This is a regular meeting of the Town Council. Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2025 Extended Through June 30th, 2027, The Ability of Public Bodies to Meet in a Fully Remote or Hybrid Manner. This law allows us to continue holding meetings remotely without a quorum of the council physically present at a meeting location. This meeting is accessible in real time by Zoom, by phone, and as a live broadcast on Amherst Media Channel 9 and livestream. There are in fact eight councillors in the town room this evening. Please be advised that this meeting is being held in person and that the remote access option is provided as a courtesy only. In the event of technical issues with the remote connection, the meeting will continue in person as scheduled such that the members of the public are encouraged to attend the meeting at its physical location if possible. Given that we have a quorum of the council present, I'm calling the August 18th regular Town Council meeting to order at 6:31. I'll call upon each councillor by the name that they have indicated they would like to be addressed. At that time, please unmute your mic and say "present", and this will indicate we can hear you and you can hear us. Please remember to mute your mic after saying "present". Pat De Angelis.
Present.
Ana Devlin-Gothier.
Present.
Councillor Ette.
Present.
Lynn Greasmer is present. Councillor Hanakely.
Present.
Bob Hegner.
Present.
Councillor Lord.
Present.
Pam Rooney.
I'm here.
Councillor Ryan.
Present.
Kathy Shane.
I'm here.
Andy Steinberg.
Present.
And Jennifer Taub is absent, and Councillor Walker is presently not here. There's no chatroom for this meeting. If councillors have technical issues, please let Athena and me know. To make a comment or ask questions, please use the raised hand button. There's no change in the order of the agenda. Just very quickly, we have two council meetings coming up, one on September 8th and the 15th. They're regular Town Council meetings, although there will be a public forum comment during the next meeting. The Community Resources Committee will meet on August 22nd and September 11th at 3:00. Finance Committee will meet on August 19th at 2:00. GOL, or Governance Organization and Legislation, will meet on August 26th and September 9th at 6:30. And Town Services and Outreach will meet on September 4th and the 18th at 10:00. There's no hearing tonight, so we're going to move to general public comment. Anyone wishing to speak who is in the town room, if you have not signed up, please do so with Athena O'Keefe. If you are on Zoom and you wish to make a public comment at this time, please raise your hand. Athena, how many people have signed up? Three? Okay. Public comments are a matter of, that are on matters within the jurisdiction of the Town Council. Residents are welcome to express their views for up to three minutes. The council will not engage in a dialogue or comment on a matter raised during the general public comment. Public comments are not reflective of the opinion of the Town Council. Please note the clock as you were making your comments. The First Amendment broadly protects individual rights to address the government, to speak and to express themselves, including their right to say hateful and offensive things. I am generally unable to shut those commenters down under the First Amendment to the U.S. Constitution unless their level of speech falls within an exception articulated by the courts, such as fighting words, true threats to a particular individual, harassment of a particular individual, or incitement of imminent lawlessness activity. If a question exists as to whether a particular speaker is engaged in unprotected speech, I must refer to the principles of public's, of freedom of speech. We'll recognize speakers in the order in which they have signed up. Athena, make sure the green light is on. When you come up, state your name and generally where you live. Please go ahead.
Good evening. I am Sarah Marshall and I live in District 4. I want to speak to the resolution in support of democracy that you will consider this evening and, I hope, pass unanimously. The United States faces a moment of unprecedented danger in which the very people who have been elected to uphold our Constitution and enforce our laws are deliberately doing the exact opposite. I am sure that everyone listening is well aware of this outrageous conduct that seems to escalate weekly. Many of us attend rallies, call our members of Congress, write postcards and letters, organize, donate to pro-democracy institutions and candidates, and take other actions to resist the authoritarian takeover. But elected representatives as a body in every town, city, and state must go on record as opposing the unconstitutional and illegal actions of the president, his appointees, and other bad actors. In this moment, silence is consent. So I urge you to vote in favor of the resolution I have submitted. Amherst will join a growing list of jurisdictions around the country that are passing such measures. The resolution before you closely follows the one passed unanimously by the Boston City Council earlier this month. And to everyone listening, I ask you to forward the resolution to your family and friends in other towns and states, to people who can urge their local legislators to endorse it. Thank you.
Thank you for joining us.
Krista Osterling Rising.
Hi. I'm very concerned about what she said, and I'm totally in agreement with that, but I'm actually here.
Please state your name and where you live.
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Someone just said it. Krista Osterling Rising.
Thank you.
But I'm here for a more local issue, and it's one that concerns me a lot. We're all concerned about climate change. UMass, Amherst College, Mount Holyoke are all putting in, you know, new construction to build sustainable engineering buildings and geothermal engineering. I think that's great, but there's one person who's doing far more, in my opinion, and that is the new owner of Laughing Dog. He's a young, a young father with two small children. He took over the business, bought the business from Parker's family, and had expected to have an interim period of adjustment. But as I'm sure most of you know, Parker passed very suddenly and unexpectedly. And as a result, Brian, the new owner, was left with a situation that he had to handle with a newborn child and a toddler in the family. And he's done a very good job of that. However, I'm very concerned about the obstructions in the alley that leads to Laughing Dog. It's going to really hurt Brian's business. I asked him about this a couple of times, and he was upset both times. I told him I would come to Town Council to advocate that those tractors, those construction vehicles have to be moved by the end of the week. They have to be moved, not just as soon as possible, but basically immediately, because the students are coming back. And if these students come back and they, you know, are not able to get to Laughing Dog, they will go somewhere else, or they won't ride a bike. And this is bad for, bad for Brian's business. He's a young business owner trying to make it go. And it's also honestly bad for Amherst College, because they buy up, you know, this was a business, A.J. Hastings, that paid taxes in Amherst. Now it's owned by Amherst College. They won't, as far as I know, correct me if I'm wrong, but they won't be paying taxes. They bought up, you know, other properties like the Dakin Estate. Now they're not paying taxes. My taxes go up. That's upsetting right there to me and other residents of Amherst. But what's much more upsetting is that Brian is, is running, attempting to run a business that is contributing much more to saving us from climate change. If people would ride bikes even half the time that they drive cars, and most people could. It's honestly easier for me to ride a bike at age 72 than it is for me to walk. I ride my bike to work every day. I ride as much as I can. I enjoy it. It keeps me healthy. But it also contributes greatly to saving us all from climate change. And Brian is doing that work, just like Parker did. And I feel that Amherst colleges using their power to threaten his business. And that needs to be stopped immediately. Those construction vehicles need to be moved.
Thank you. You, you need to conclude.
Okay, that's what I have to say. I feel it very strongly, and I'm very concerned about it.
Thank you very much for joining us.
Vincent O'Connor.
Good evening. I'm Vincent O'Connor, 175 Summer Street, Apartment 12. Title of my presentation this evening is "Paving Amherst Downtown While Ignoring Amherst Neighborhoods." The taxpayers of this community are being treated to another expensive downtown paving project, presumably to enhance the ambiance for our seven-month-a-year student residence of the new luxury-priced UMass dormitory area, while those of us who live here 12 months a year have to make do with streets that are not even safe for bicycling. These projects follow in the footsteps of the ones around Kendrick Park and in front of the Town Hall that serve the five-story buildings of our friendly real estate speculators. This council needs to take control of the community's public work spending. Vote to establish a council public works committee composed of three councillors and two members of the public appointed by the council. See to it that your public works committee meets every month with the public works department's leadership. Make it clear in your rules and regulations that every public works department grant application, without exception, must be reviewed by that committee and, upon its recommendation, has to be approved by the council. Finally, take the annual paving program for the town out of the hands of the public works department. Allow each councillor to nominate two streets in their district for paving, townwide for at-large councillors, with lengthened with the paving attached. Arrange for the department to submit its paving recommendations. Then have the committee hold three public hearings, north, south, and east, from which that year's annual paving program can be arrived at and recommended to the full council for its approval. And find a way to insist that UMass fairly reimburse Amherst for the many thousands of vehicles registered with the University Parking Authority, which do not pay the automobile excise tax to Amherst or reimburse us for the cost of Amherst roads over which they travel to UMass. Thank you.
Thank you for joining us. We're going to move on to the consent agenda. The items were chosen, chosen, in many cases, they have passed committees unanimously, and they are considered to be not controversial. To remove an item from the consent agenda for discussion later in the meeting, ask that it be removed when the list is made. The request to move, remove an item from the consent agenda does not require a second. So, the motion is as follows. I will seek a second. To move the following items and the printed motions thereunder and approve those items as a single unit. 6A, adoption of the commemoration of the 100th anniversary of the dedication of St. Bridget's Church, Amherst. 6B, adoption of the resolution in support of democracy and calling for a return to the constitutional principles that are the foundation of our republic. Waiver of Town Council Rules of Procedure 8.6 for Agenda Item 9A3. 9A, 1 to 3, approval of the following town manager appointments. Historic Commission, George Battenger, Joel Greenbaum, Mackenzie Lancidall for terms to expire June 30th, 2028. Patricia Oath, Robert Fordham, reappointments for terms to expire June 30th, 2026. Local Historic District Commission, Beth, Ben Lynch, Nicole Miller, for terms to expire June 30th, 2028. Rizwan Ayoub for a term to expire June 30th, 2027. Greta Wilcox for a term to expire June 30th, 2026. Senior Services Director Lisa S. Bouchata. 11A to D, approval of the following meeting minutes. June, June 16, 2025, regular meeting minutes. June 30th, 2025, regular meeting minutes. July 21, 2025, regular meeting minutes. July 24, 2025, special meeting minutes. Breka. Yes, I'm sorry. Councillor Ette.
Yeah, I'd like to take 6B off consent.
6B, okay. Is that because your name was inadvertently left off? Okay.
6B is in support of democracy, so my name wasn't supposed to be on it.
Oh, it's not? Okay. Would you like it removed? You don't have to, we can make the adjustment and not take it off.
No, no, I want to remove. I think 6B is supposed to go on consent.
Yes.
Yes, and I'm saying it shouldn't.
You're taking it off of consent. Okay. All right, the motion is as made except for 6B, adoption of the resolution in support of democracy and calling for a return to the constitutional principles that are the foundation of our republic. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Bob. Moving to the vote, Ana Devlin-Gothier.
Aye.
Councillor Ette.
Aye.
Lynn Greasmer is an aye. Councillor Hanakely.
Aye.
Bob Hegner.
Aye.
Councillor Lord.
Aye.
Pam Rooney.
Yes.
Councillor Ryan.
Aye.
Kathy Shane.
Yes.
Andy Steinberg.
Yes.
Councillor Walker is absent. Pat De Angelis.
Aye.
Okay. Passes unanimously with two councillors absent. We're going to move to the 100th anniversary of the dedication of St. Bridget's Church. And George Ryan, please read the last pieces of that.
So this commemoration recognizes the 100th anniversary of the building of the current church of St. Bridget's here in the center of town. I thought I'd just take a moment and just acknowledge something that I think doesn't need acknowledging, but is important for us to think about, that this church was built and largely composed of immigrants, and that we are a community largely composed of immigrants, or sons and daughters of immigrants, and currently includes a vibrant Hispanic community, and also every month, an African Mass and Potluck. So it's a vibrant community. It's been in the, the church has been here for 100 years, and simply recognizes it. Also, it's a very beautiful building. I guess I'm somewhat prejudiced in that view, but I think it's one of the lovelier buildings in our downtown. Now therefore be it resolved that we, the Amherst Town Council, do hereby commemorate the 100th anniversary of the dedication of St. Bridget's Church, Amherst, and thank the members and friends of the Catholic Community of Amherst for their many contributions to the town, and urge other residents to celebrate this milestone in the history of St. Bridget's and our town.
Thank you. The next one was taken off the agenda. I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution in support of democracy and calling for a return to the constitutional principles that are the foundation of our republic. Is there a second?
Laura, second.
Matthew. Thank you. Councillor Ette asked that it be removed. Would you please speak to your request?
I think these are challenging times, and so I'd like to thank the sponsors of this resolution, and also the council for creating a forum where we could speak about some of the goings-on in the country. I think it's good that I give a brief description of what the resolution is for those who may listen but not have an opportunity to read the resolution. As a response to disturbing and even unconstitutional actions by the current administration, concerned citizens from Amherst have brought forward this resolution. It seeks the council's support for calls to defend democracy and return the country to constitutional principles of the founding era. It begins with the celebration of Massachusetts' contribution to the Constitution of 1789. It continues with a condemnation of President Trump's administration and some of the actions that have been taken by it. And it concludes with a commendation of the governor, the attorney general, and the Commonwealth's representative for acting on behalf of the interests of the Commonwealth. The shavings of our foundations as a country are difficult to ignore. We seek to do something, anything to resist. However, not all action is good action. And public speech, while still free, is not always efficacious. And so upon reflection, I cannot support the resolution that stands before us. Instead, I would support a resolution that is rewritten to address how these actions have a local impact. I would encourage my colleagues to do the same. The resolution contributes to the divisiveness in our current political discourse. It lacks or downplays the effects of the administration's actions on our community in Amherst. And ultimately, its final objectives are unachievable. Amherst did not create the divisiveness that we observe around the country and in our community. However, we can contribute to firing the flames. This resolution would do that by alienating people who agree with the administration and by emphasizing partisanship in the council. And except we aren't paying attention, there are people who support specific actions by the administration, whether those actions involve immigration enforcement, government waste, public health, safety, et cetera. One need not agree with these positions to recognize that these voices exist and deserve to be heard. I'm sure they are examples drawn from past administrations that would fall under the categories covered by the resolution. In other words, what seems like a blatant disregard for constitutional norms in one's eyes might be considered public policy only executed in another. It depends on where one stands. Therefore, the council shouldn't interpose itself in such conversations. Councillors who oppose the administration can form a caucus, speak for themselves without having to speak for the entire town. Point two. The resolution downplays the effects of certain government actions, and instead it treats these in generalities. In truth, businesses in Amherst have felt the crunch of the ice raids. Children have suffered abuse from the callous language used to describe certain groups in our country. Our educational institutions, UMass and Amherst College, for example, have lost millions of dollars of funding with irreparable impact on faculty, staff, and students, while simultaneously jeopardizing significant research that will improve our lives and create wealth in the country. Cultural institutions in our town have lost grants, diminishing the artistic life in town. Young children are going hungry. The list is quite long. I don't see any of these local issues really expressed in this resolution. I'll report, I'll return to this point at the end. Point three. Ultimately, the resolution, as it is written, will amount to an empty gesture because it can't actually be put into effect. The resolution urges the Massachusetts Congressional delegation to push their congressional colleagues to exercise their legislative authority to enforce the Constitution, to work with the judicial branch to restore the separation of powers, and to ensure that illegal or unconstitutional acts, including acts of corruption, are overturned. However, these are all impossible to accomplish in practice. Congress cannot enforce any action, least of all the protection of the Constitution. To enforce something requires force, and that lies with the executive. Enforcement, if we don't intend to think of it as force, depends on other interior constitutional mechanisms, one of which is checks and balances, and also an extra constitutional support, which is ambition. If Congress lacks the ambition to exercise its authority, how can it enforce the Constitution? In like manner, Congress and the judicial branch cannot restore separation of powers or ensure that illegal or unconstitutional acts are overturned. There's a constitutional process which should be followed in good times and, like right now, in bad times. This last point deserves to be pondered on. If you believe the resolution should pass, even if its logic is constitutional, constitutionally incoherent, then the request amounts to hypocrisy, because by inadvertently pursuing good ends, one will rely on similar dubious means like the administration the council would be criticizing. Despite these criticisms, there's a resolution worth supporting. Such a resolution would emphasize the local impact of federal policies and would commend the governor, attorney general, and Massachusetts congressional representatives for fighting for Amherst and the state's interests. While it may not amount to a defense of democracy, and it may not include condemnation of the current administration, it would encourage those tireless advocates for the Commonwealth. They deserve our thanks. Finally, the Constitution is not only a document. It requires a constitutionally-minded people. If so, we need to retreat from our bubble, and Amherst is a bubble, and have real conversations with people who may disagree with us. Such conversations would not be condescending, dismissive, nor would they even attempt to persuade. They would simply be looking for an opportunity to listen. The goal isn't, I believe, to convince everyone around me to leave with me and support my political political beliefs. But I think the goal we should strive at as a community is for us to find a way to live together. And so I would encourage the council to rewrite this resolution and use it as an opportunity to again commend those who have been advocating for our interests in the state or in the Commonwealth. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there other comments? Pam Rooney, I'm sorry. Pam, please go ahead.
Whether one agrees or disagrees with Counselor Ette, I think we ought to be reflecting time limits on presentations. Typically, in town meeting, it was five minutes for something that was being presented. Thank you.
Counselor Hanke.
I want to thank Counselor Ette for so well stating some of the concerns I also had with this resolution. So, thank you.
Are there any other comments at this time? Pat, please go ahead.
I'm trying to figure out what I want to say, because I certainly read through this and supported it. And I have great respect for Counselor Ette and for the sponsors of this. I'm wondering if it is possible for the sponsors to join with Counselor Ette to look at some of this. At the same time, I hear his critique, and I don't 100% agree with it, because I feel like this is an attempt to address the constitutional crisis that we are living in, the setup of an authoritarian government. And there is part of me that feels any step forward in that, however small or slightly misplaced or unrhythmic it might be, still is an important step. I cannot support this administration, our federal administration. Not only can I support it, it frightens me deeply. I also feel that if you listen to Counselor Ette's additions about local issues and divisiveness, we also have to turn that lens on ourselves as a community, because we are a very divided community, not necessarily along current Republican and Democratic lines, but around issues, all kinds of issues in town. And people use anything that they can to sling mud and stop things they don't agree with, even when they've been passed in a democratic process. And I know I'm rambling, and I apologize, but I'm going to ramble a little longer. I found countless ways that I wanted to address our own community and the divisions that scar us on a daily basis, us. And we need to address what the federal government currently is doing and the lack of fight and support by many people in Congress, both Republican and Democrat, who are not standing up for democracy. If this goes forward to a vote, I will vote for it, however imperfect. But there is something that maybe the sponsors want to look at and work with Counselor Ette on. And also, damn it, I know I'm taking a long time. I really like it when there are counselors who take a lot of time, but when something comes up that they don't want to hear, condemn somebody else taking a lot of time. That's enough crankiness.
So, this seems a bit like the age-old discussion of whether or not or how the council should have expressed its opinion on larger national or international issues. I hear what Counselor Ette is saying about sharing the local impacts, and I believe there would be an appropriate place for Counselor Ette to work with other counselors or residents to craft a resolution about that. I think that those are important to share out, and I think we have seen, absolutely seen, those local impacts of this administration hitting our community very hard, very hardly, in a very challenging way. However, this resolution specifically ties in to Constitution Day. That's how it starts, and what that means, and what it looks like to uphold the Constitution. Its purpose does not start out as an indictment of this administration. Its purpose starts out as September 17th is Constitution Day. What does that look like? We, as a council, have passed a number of other resolutions, proclamations, citations, that are in support of issues that are national. Sometimes we tie it back to local, sometimes we don't. But I'm thinking back to some of the resolutions we've passed in the past three or four years, and how those have linked back to the issue that we're talking about here, which is upholding of democracy and upholding of the freedoms that we are guaranteed through that Constitution. I think that we have talked about this issue in a local way and in a zoomed-out way before. This is just kind of looking in a bit more of a summit of nature at that. So I do think that this resolution is appropriate. I don't agree with all of your critiques, Counselor Ette, but I hear some of them and agree with some of them as well. However, for me, the context of this being about Constitution Day makes it appropriate. And I would welcome, and I'm happy to support, and if I can help, a more localized version of this, separate from this one, which I plan to support today. Thank you.
Counselor Lord.
Thank you. I won't be able to address everything. I'm a slower processor, and I would need to hear it again, but I just wanted to address a few things. I'm in support of this resolution. There was mention, Counselor Ette, about an empty gesture. And if I think about it, I could think of all resolutions kind of as an empty gesture, because, I mean, they're making a statement. Or even our statement on being a sanctuary city, is that really protecting the kids, the people that are going to be taken off the street by unmasked or masked ICE people? Probably not. But to me, for some people, it signifies that we're saying something, because to stay silent, they say, is to side with the oppressor or the harmer. So I think even though it's not going to maybe move the needle too much, we're making a declarative statement that some of the constitutional breaks we see are not okay. We're signaling to our residents that we're going to stand up for them if their constitutional rights are not honored. And as a lawyer, I know you can see a lot of the mistakes in there, but as a commonplace human, whatever that means, I'm like, this would tell me that my town council cares. And if I was a supporter of this government, I don't feel like I'm being attacked in this resolution. I understand why we do have residents that support the current administration. There are many reasons, and then there are many reasons why others don't. But I really feel like remaining silent isn't very helpful, and I know this isn't like taking to the streets, but it's something we can do within our power. And then I just think there's a lot of gaslighting going on, too. So if we, as a town, did say we see some things that aren't okay in our government, it's not, we love this country, we want to fight for this country, we want to fight for the Constitution. I don't mean to speak for all of us, but I love this country, but I also don't like what's happening. It does scare me, because, you know, first they came, first they came, they're going to come for all of us eventually. And yeah, so I'm in support of this. I agree that there might be some things. Thank you, Anna, for suggesting maybe another resolution that addresses the local harms directly, because we are feeling it, even in my nuclear family with my child. What's happening with the government trickles down really dramatically. So I'm just in support of this. I don't think that cleared up anything, but I just wanted to address a couple of things that I heard. Thank you, and thank you for sharing.
Counselor Ette.
Thank you, counselors. Part of the reason I removed this from the consent agenda was precisely to have a conversation rather than simply have a vote that would disappear like a puff of smoke once we're I take what Counselor Rooney said in good faith, and anyone who has listened to me would know that I tend not to be verbose and frankly tend to be silent in most occasions. And so, and please forgive me for going over the limit. The resolution begins with the Constitution Day, but once we move past the first three paragraphs, it doesn't return to it, and the resolutions, that is, the actions to be taken, at no point refer to Constitution Day. There isn't a space that speaks about, for example, celebrating the Constitution or anything of that sort. That's something that, again, could be rectified in what may be rewritten. There is a debate that could be had about the kind of issues that the council could take up in resolutions, and I'm all for it. But I'd like to return to what was mentioned, the expression that I used, an empty gesture. I don't think resolutions are empty gestures. In fact, I don't think this is an empty gesture. If I did, then I would simply flat-out reject the resolution. That's not what I've done. What I'm asking is that we rethink and perhaps rewrite. If we care about the Constitution, and if we, as a legislative body, are interested in the public that listens to us, we should educate them appropriately. And what I was saying about the empty gesture relates to education. There is no way, this is in the final third paragraph, there is no way that Massachusetts' congressional delegation can push their congressional colleagues to exercise their legislative authority to enforce the Constitution. It can't happen. There is no way the congressional colleagues can work with the judicial branch to restore separation of powers. That cannot happen. And as for ensuring that illegal or unconstitutional acts are overturned, there is a proper way to get that done. That is not expressed here. Those are the things that I'm pointing to. We should not, because of the righteousness of our cause, give the public false hope. If we pass this resolution, it will be a good deed, but it won't achieve any of the things that we want. It would only have miseducated the public, and I don't believe that that is the role of this council.
Counselor Ryan.
I just have a process question. I'm just curious, was there a vote at GOL?
There was a vote.
And what was the vote? Direct amend? Was it 5-0, 4-0? What was the vote?
It was 4-0 with one counselor absent. But it was, remember, it's clear, consistent, and action.
Right, exactly. Okay.
Word actionable.
So they could not and did not discuss the content?
No, they did not.
That's correct.
All right.
There's been several suggestions that this be removed from the agenda and that the sponsor work with Counselor Ette and others to see if there are ways to adopt or, if you will, modify or edit. But that requires a motion. Anna.
I was going to move to, I was going to call the question. Unless someone feels very strongly about another motion, I would like to call the question.
Question's been called. That means we'll move immediately to vote, correct? Athena? Okay.
Are we formally seeking, I mean, was that a motion to call the question, which would need a second and an actual vote, or are we just adopting that there were no other comments?
I was going to go on the fact that there were no other comments, but if, Anna, would you like that a motion to be, to be a motion to?
No, I was just ready to vote on this, so long as there are no other questions, I'm fine not making it a formal motion.
Okay. So we will begin in this case with Counselor Ette.
I abstain.
Did you say you abstained? Thank you. Lynn, can I just, as we're voting for the resolution or not for the resolution? That is correct. Thank you. I'm going to hold my vote for the moment. Counselor Hanke. Bob Hegner.
Abstain.
Counselor Lord.
Aye.
Pam Rooney.
Yes.
Counselor Ryan.
Yes.
Kathy Shane.
Yes.
Andy Steinberg. There's some still absent. Pat DeAngelus.
Aye.
Anna Devlin-Goth here.
Aye.
And Lynn Greasmer is an aye. It passes with, one, two, three, four, five, six, eight in favor, and three abstentions and two counselors absent. We're going to move on to, there are no presentations tonight. We're going to move on to a borrowing authorization for sewer and wastewater facilities assessment. I noticed, I would note that both the town manager is here, obviously in the room, and Guilford Moore, the superintendent of Public Works, has joined us as well. Would you like to make a few comments in advance of the, well, let me put the motion on the table? To refer the borrowing authorization request, sewer and water facilities assessment to the Finance Committee with a report to the council by September 8th, 2025. Is there a second?
Shane seconds.
Okay. It's been seconded by Shane. Please go ahead. Paul.
Thank you. And Guilford can jump in on this afterwards, but the, many of you have taken tours of the wastewater treatment facility and understand this are challenges that we are faced with in terms of bringing that facility up to the current status of operations that we expect. To get that started, we need to do a complete study and get a plan together, and that's what this funding would achieve. The funds for this will be borrowed, and then will be added to the sewer rate when it comes time to set the sewer rates, when it comes time to repay that debt. Guilford, do you want to add anything to what we're going to do?
I just wanted to add that, I just wanted to add that this was planned all along in the budget process, but during the budget process, it really got taken out of the cash capital and put into borrowing capital, and then it got dropped off the agenda and misplaced. So we're just now trying to work this in, back into the system and get it funded and approved, so we can get moving with this. But we had talked about this, and it's in our goals and objectives, that we actually start performing this process and doing the facilities plan and moving forward, since we can start deciding how to upgrade the plant.
Okay. Thank you. Are there questions from the council? Did you have your hand up, Counselor Ryan?
Yes, I did. I'm just curious, and maybe you can't answer that until this $750,000 is spent and you get the report, but if this goes ahead, what is, how long do you think this would take from beginning to actually having the problem addressed? Are we talking two years, three years, five years, or is that something that is going to be determined by this process?
That is something that will be determined by the process. It's gonna take over, it's gonna take a year roughly to get the, the study done, and then we'll get to time to digest it and move forward with how we want to fund it.
Are there any other questions, councilors? I, I would like to just make a comment, and that is, thank you for proceeding with this. I, like many other councilors, have visited the wastewater treatment plant and have been very concerned about the condition of that plant. So we look forward to the results of the study and unfortunately having to bite the bullet. Okay, any other questions or comments? Okay, then we're gonna move to a vote. Lynn Greasmer is an aye. Counselor Hanke.
Aye.
Bob Hegner.
Aye.
Counselor Lord. Pam Rooney.
Yes.
Counselor Ryan.
Aye.
Kathy Shane.
Yes.
Andy Steinberg.
Yes.
Jennifer Taub and Counselor Walker are both absent. Pat DeAngelis. Anna Devlin-Goth here.
Aye.
Counselor Ette.
Aye.
It's unanimous with two councilors absent. The November 4th town election, thank you for joining us, Guilford.
Kathy has her hand up.
Oh, I'm sorry, Kathy.
Just a quick comment. This will be on the Finance Committee's agenda tomorrow, and we will get a report back to you for the next council meeting. So we would like to move it quickly, and we will.
Thank you. I, I would add to that, and that is that, given that we are expecting it back at the next council meeting on the 8th of September, we have already begun the establishment of a public forum, which takes note, takes required number of days for notice, and so there will be a public forum on this expenditure at that time. Okay. Anything else?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. November 4th town election, to approve the warrant for the regular town election on Tuesday, November 4th, 2025 for posting. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any, are there any questions or comments? Seeing none, I'm gonna move to a vote. Counselor Hanke.
Aye.
Bob Hegner.
Aye.
Counselor Lord.
Aye.
Pam Rooney.
Yes.
Counselor Ryan.
Aye.
Kathy Shane.
Yes.
Uh, Andy Steinberg.
Yes.
Jennifer and
Aye.
Uh, Pat DeAngelis. Uh, thank you. Anna Devlin-Goth here.
Aye.
Counselor Ette.
Aye.
And Lynn Greasmer is an aye. It's unanimous. The second part of this vote is to hold in-person early voting in, to the, in the first floor meeting room of Town Hall on the following dates: Monday, October 27th, Tuesday, October 28th, Wednesday, October 29th. All of those would be from 8 to 4:30. Thursday, October 30th would be from 8 to 7, and Friday, October 31st would be from 8 to 4:30. Is there a second?
Shane seconds.
Okay. Anna, do you have a question?
I do. I have a question for Paul, and it is, it is related to this. I am very excited that we have our new town clerk in place, and I'm curious about your timeline for replacing her as, in filling the role of Assistant Town Clerk. I am not sure if that factors into early voting being held at Town Hall or anything, but I, I would imagine that that, her position is now vacant since she moved into the town clerk role, and I'm, I'm just curious about the timeline and if that's moving forward.
Yes, yes, it is moving forward. I think, believe it, it's actually been posted. I know the position was reviewed, and so it's been posted, and it wouldn't really impact the, the early voting because it's really not the, it's election workers who staff the early voting.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments? Seeing none, we'll move to a vote. Bob Hegner.
Aye.
Counselor Lord.
Aye.
Pam Rooney.
Yes.
Counselor Ryan.
Aye.
Kathy Shane.
Yes.
Andy Steinberg.
Yes.
Pat DeAngelis. Anna Devlin-Goth here.
Aye.
Counselor Ette.
Aye.
Lynn Greasmer is an aye. Counselor Hanke.
Aye.
It's unanimous with two councilors absent. We're going to have a brief presentation on the housing production plan and, but in doing, oh, Andy, I'm sorry, you have your hand up.
Yeah, in relation to the last item, there was no mention made about mail ballot voting.
Paul, would you please speak to that?
There, there is mail-in voting, but does not require any council action. But we can give the whole sort of schedule of things when they're available and things like that.
Yeah, just wanted to make sure that we just say in a public meeting that there is another method of voting that was not brought up. Thank you.
Right, and there's also absentee voting, which is another form for submitting your vote.
So there are four ways to vote: in person, on the day of the election, early voting, in Town Hall, mail-in ballot, and absentee ballots. Thank you. Okay, moving on to the housing production plan, we are going to ref, well, the plan is that we will refer this to the Community Resources Committee for a report and recommendation to the council by October 6th, 2025. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. And at this point, Nate, is it only you?
Yes, thanks. It's only me tonight.
All right.
Thanks, everyone. Nate Malloy. Yeah, Greg Rochaine is on vacation. He worked most closely on this plan, and I, I helped with it. So a little over a year ago, the town hired Barrett Consulting Group, and Judy Barrett and her team worked on completing a housing production plan. And so the request before the council is to adopt the plan as the town's affordable housing plan. The planning board did so. This is a requirement of the state. And so the housing production plan is something that, we had one in 2013. They're only good for five years, and then, you know, they expire. You could update them. Ours has expired, so this is a whole new plan. Communities will do it because they can safeguard it against a comprehensive permit. Really, we take, we see it as a proactive approach to understand our housing market and really what are the affordable needs in Amherst. So it really focuses on a, on the unmet need of affordable housing at a range of incomes. And the state has a, you know, a whole process that you have to go through. They have a formula for chapters, and so it's a prescribed process, you know, has to have a needs assessment, goals, implementation strategies, and then a target number to achieve, whether that's, you know, a half of 1% is the minimum, or it could be more. And so the plan has all of those components. It's pretty lengthy. The idea really is that, you know, the town would use this as a strategy for the next five years to then make zoning changes or policy changes or bylaw, you know, other bylaw changes. And so really, to me, it's a roadmap and a framework to then have, you know, local action to try to achieve some of the unmet need in the strategies in the plan. And so, you know, the planning board and Housing Trust are talking about having meetings later this year together to talk about how they could move some of these things forward. And, you know, an adoption of the plan is in compulsory to the town to do everything in it or even meet the housing production goals. What it really asks, what it's telling the state is, is that we support the plan, and it allows the town to submit the plan to the state, and the state can approve it. There's two steps by the state. One is approve the plan, and that's just saying that it meets all of the required pieces that they lay out in the, in the legislation and the state regulations. And if the community then meets the production goals, a plan can be certified. And it's actually really hard to achieve, but some communities will really work hard to get certification because then that's a safe harbor for comprehensive permits. Amherst has a safe harbor because we have over 10% of our housing stock as affordable. We've had that for a number of years. So we're already at safe harbor. So the impetus to doing this housing production plan isn't to try to, you know, combat a comprehensive permit or to say no. It's really, like I said, to me, to lay out a framework for affordable housing for the next five years. And so Judy is, you know, renowned in this work, and her team did a really good job. And so to me, they tailor strategies and ideas that, you know, Amherst can then really consider and discuss. And it's everything from financial, programmatic, to, you know, more production, to zoning changes, to, you know, a number of things. And you don't have to agree with all of them. And so adoption, to me, of the plan isn't saying that you agree with everything, but you think that, you know, they have done a good job at their needs assessment and their goals and their strategies, and that it, you know, does have that, all the components necessary for a housing production plan.
Nate, first of all, thank you for setting the context for how we look at this. That was very helpful. Are there questions from the council? Yes, George.
So assuming this goes to CRC, which is, I think, a reasonable assumption, but even aside from that, this could also be something Nate might want to address, or maybe my colleagues have some thoughts. But I would like some guidance or some, this discussion about how to prioritize or how we go about prioritizing these many, many strategies that are proposed. It's kind of like a playbook that has 150 plays in it, and we're trying to figure out how to move the ball down the field, and we look for help and advice, and we don't get it. And I'm not saying it's anybody's fault. Well, maybe that with some of these, the council itself is deeply divided, but I would be benefited from, from some guidance, either from staff or from CRC or from my colleagues about how to prioritize some of these many, many strategies. I don't know where that takes place. Maybe someone would say it takes place here in this body. I would like to have some help.
Good question. Kathy?
I think that is a good question, and CRC can focus at least on that and say, you know, if you want to prioritize, how might you? When this comes, I haven't had time over the summer, although I have notes. I have some questions about statements, some questions about data presentation, and some questions about tone, and some of that leads to the strategies at the end. And I, as a counselor, I didn't send in a long document to the planning committee, but I will try to write those all up and share them with you, Nate, as we go in it. And, because I, you know, things like, there are little quote bubbles, and I tried to figure out where they came from, and there's a survey that I think gets presented as if it's data, and it's not. So I do appreciate the actual dot data we have in this. It's valuable that they, the team gathered all the information, and I think it, it diminishes some of the findings that are very factual. So I, I see this, I am on CRC, and I will try to finally get this written up where it's just notes over that I took over the summer. But I urge everyone to read the whole document. It's long, but part of it is an education exercise. And then also, in response to George's, how many of the per, lists at the end flow from the analysis is one of the things I want to look for, because you could put a lot of those, George, on the list, whether or not we had had analysis, and these are things you could do. So trying to think of where would we target would be one of the ways I would be reading and thinking about the priority listings at the end, you know, policy changes and whatever listing at the end. Thank you.
Pam Rooney.
Thank you. I'm thinking of what's on the plate of the CRC and, and, and people's personal schedules that I'm aware of, and it feels like October 8th is, is a little too early, a little too soon to come up with any kind of comprehensive feedback on a 100-something page document. Hard, hard to synthesize. I mean, there's already an executive summary on it, but I think I would, I would again look for some clarification from, from Nate, and I appreciate that, that background. Just what role does the CRC really have in, in taking a document and saying, you know, we like A, but we don't agree with B. We like, we like A, but C seems, you know, out of whack. I mean, we are not the experts who have been spending the last year studying this issue. But as, as Counselor Shane just mentioned, you know, there is data, there is data, and, and it doesn't all necessarily line up. How and what role does the CRC have in, in agreeing with, disagreeing with, or putting a stamp of approval on a document like this? I would love some more feedback. And also, and also a change of the date by which the CRC is supposed, is supposed to. Mid-November makes much more sense.
We can certainly change the date, although when we do put a date on, it often means that if you're not going to be ready, you at least give us an update at that, at that time, and, and give us a sense of when it is due. As for your bigger question, which is a much bigger question, I asked the same thing, and I still don't know that I have an answer either. The other piece that I want to add to that question is, how does this then articulate with our comprehensive housing plan policy?
Sure, thanks. So, you know, we provided the consultants the policy and a number of documents and reference documents and other resources. And so, you know, to me, it would be, if this were, if council adopted it and it went to the state and it was approved, I think, you know, does the policy, is the, you know, does the policy get updated as well, or, you know, does this, you know, to me, it doesn't necessarily change the policy. It doesn't have to, that, you know, there's a lot of unmet housing need in Amherst. And the idea is that this is trying to say, well, you know, at different income levels, here's where the unmet need is. And then with implementation strategies, they try to categorize them by theme, you know, how, how, how could we achieve some of those, those, you know, meet the unmet need. I agree, I think there's a lot. And so when the planning board discussed this, they said, well, our role would be more with land use and permitting. And so, for instance, the financial strategies that dealt with, say, lending or certain things, maybe they weren't going to focus on as much. And some of the programmatic things may not be things that they look at. And so, to me, that's where the meeting later this year with the Housing Trust and Funding Board is, is, is actually doing that, is kind of talking about who would, who would do what and who would take on some of those implementation strategies. So there's, you know, there can be overlap, but it's not redundant. And maybe the Housing Trust focuses on certain education pieces and maybe financial pieces or working with certain organizations outside the town to get support, whereas the planning board says, okay, we like the idea of infill neighborhoods, we like the idea of rezoning some areas, and then they really focus on that. So, for instance, the plan talks about infill in residential neighborhoods, but it doesn't tell you necessarily what number, say, units per acre the density is or what the housing type could be. They have some ideas, but to me, that becomes the local discussion. Okay, if we think that certain areas could be, have increased density, what does it really look like? And, you know, how do we make sure that it meets the housing need? So, you know, allowing increased density may not, you know, meet affordable housing. So then the component is, okay, can we modify inclusionary zoning a little bit to apply to certain development methods? If we like cottage-style developments, for instance, do we have thresholds in our bylaw to say that a greater percent has to be affordable or, you know, for seniors or certain things? And so that's, you know, gets down into the weeds a little bit, but that's, to me, where the planning board's conversations will go. In terms of the CRC comments, yeah, I mean, I think, you know, the consultants have basically finished the plan, but if you have a lot of comments and questions, please send them to staff, and we can organize them, and we're working with the consultants to look at them. You know, to me, it's whether or not you dislike a strategy is more about, does it make sense? So if you think that a strategy doesn't seem to relate to the needs or your question, that I think that's a, that's, to me, the direction of the questioning, not, well, I don't, you know, like, I don't, you know, if you say, I just don't like it, it's like, okay, well, it's, why not? Is it something out of thin air? Does it not make sense in terms of the context in Amherst? And so that's where I think it's appropriate to ask those questions. In terms of the data piece, if you have, you know, specific questions, sure, let us know, let staff know. I do think it's really hard to capture some of the information. So during the public information sessions, there's already been questions about how many off-campus students there are, you know, and really trying to get off, you know, get, get to that number. And to me, it's a, it's a, it's a big number. It's a huge number. And so we've worked with UMass to try to refine that. And to me, whether it's, say, 5,000 or 7,000 or 9,000, it's, it's still a big number. I don't want to get hung up on if it's 9,000 and something or 8,000 and something. We just know it's a really big number. And so, you know, you could say, well, I'm not sure about it, and make a note of that. We've gone back and forth with a few different data sources, and it's really difficult. The census counts students, but it's not accurate. UMass records them since the pandemic, but they have, the way they aggregate numbers is different. And so every data source counts things a little differently, and it's really hard to reconcile sometimes. So it would be more about like, okay, I really have questions about, say, this 80% AMI. What does that mean in terms of housing or Or, you know, so if you, you know, if there's certain data points, sure. But sometimes it might be really hard to get at, you know, a number that everyone agrees on for some of the data points.
Are there other questions from the council? Or comments? Pam?
Can I ask that in your, in your motion to refer to the CRC, that you put it to at least the, like, the second, the second meeting in November?
Yes. I believe that the date of that second meeting is the 17th. Correct?
That sounds, that sounds about right. I don't have it exactly, but, no, probably not. It would either be the 13th or the 27th. Let's say the 13th.
You're saying you want to move the date to the 13th? That's not a council meeting.
You had October dates, Pam, I think.
November 13th is Thursday.
Right, November 13 is the CRC meeting date, the date by which we're supposed to respond and whatever the meeting following that one is. Whatever the council meeting is.
Immediately following that is the 17th.
Okay, thank you.
I made the motion, I would accept that as a friendly amendment.
I accept it, too.
Okay. So we change this to November 17.
Thank you for that.
Thank you. George, I mean, Counsel Ryan.
I have no real objection to this, but my concern is that the further it gets pushed, the closer we come to the end of this council's term. Just curious if anyone knows offhand, how many more council meetings are after the 17th?
Yes, there are three.
There are three, so.
I'm sorry, there is only two.
Yeah, that's what I thought, too. So, you know, we run the risk, and I know CRC's got a lot on their plate, but we run the risk of the clock running out, and you have a new council, and this whole thing will have to start over again. So just with that thought in mind, I guess we'll go ahead with this motion.
Okay. So the motion, as it presently reads, is to refer the housing production plan to the Community Resources Committee for a report and recommendation to the council by November 17, 2025. That motion was made, and the change was conferred by the second person that seconded the motion. Any further comments? Seeing none, we'll move to a vote. Counselor Lord?
Aye.
Pam Rooney?
Yes.
Counselor Ryan?
Aye.
Kathy Shane?
Yes.
Andy Steinberg?
Yes.
Pat DeAngelis?
Aye.
Anna Devlin-Gothier?
Aye.
Counselor Ette?
Aye.
Lynn Griesmerz?
Aye.
Counselor Hanke?
Aye.
Bob Hegner?
Aye.
Okay, it's unanimous with two counselors absent. We've completed the action items. The manager appointments were on the consent agenda, so we're moving to the next, which is the recommendation to the town manager of a council to serve on the Department of Public Works Building Committee. We did discuss this at our last meeting. A motion was made. The motion at that time ended up in a tie vote, and so we deferred it to this meeting. Point of order, there's not a motion on the floor. There wasn't a motion postponed. Right, that's correct. Pam Rooney?
You're muted, Pam.
Muted, Pam.
I'm sorry, Pam, yes, you are muted.
Thank you. At the last meeting, there was a lot of discussion about a counselor not, not being appropriate for a counselor to sit on multiple bodies. And I wanted to express an interest in participating in this ground-up development of a plan for the DPW, that my skills would be very appropriate for that. And if it would be appropriate for me to step off of the Jones Library Building Committee, I would, sadly, but gladly step off the Jones Library Building Committee to better serve the DPW effort. Thank you.
Counselor Ryan?
So I take the floor is open for nominations. Is that correct?
Yes.
I want to nominate Counselor Rooney.
Okay. And Pam, you have indicated you would accept that, yes?
Yes, thank you.
Counselor Hanke?
As with last meeting, I would like to be considered for serving on this committee.
Thank you. So the vote at this point is between two counselors. Are there any other counselors that would like to put their name in? Counselor Ryan, you had your hand up?
If we have a chance to speak to our, to my motion, yes. But if there's others who wish to put their name in nomination?
Are there any others who would like to put their name in nomination? Seeing none, I'm going to ask the candidates that have put their names forward to speak to their candidacy. Counselor, no, Pam Rooney first.
I was gonna let Counselor Hanke speak first. As I mentioned before, my background from the last decades has been directed toward the development of plans and projects in which one has to analyze space needs, circulation and traffic needs, storage and functionality requirements. And that is from, everything from site planning to building, planning and construction. The types of projects that I've been involved in as a project manager and as a participant have ranged greatly. But all of them require serious consideration of the desires of the people that will be, that will be working in the building. Their functionality primarily is what are the functions? What space does that require to be optimally efficient? And how does that package get put together? And I have been involved in numerous federal agency projects of that nature, as well as part of the planning project, planning efforts at the University for New Construction. So I would bring those skills to the table. I would gladly participate on this, in this venture, because it is, in my mind, the most important one on our plate right now. Thank you.
Counselor Hanke?
Thank you. I would like to be considered for the committee because I'm committed to asking the hard questions to keep costs down, even when others don't want to hear those questions or respond to those questions. It is all well and good to find out what is the optimal needs and optimal spaces and optimal desires of a body to, a division to work optimally. But money has to be considered. And that might and will require trade-offs between optimal desires and what is desired and what is minimally needed and can fit into what we can afford. And those questions must be asked. They must be asked regularly, repeatedly, and not forgotten. And I am committed to doing that. I'm also committed to looking at unusual and previously unconsidered or potentially unconsidered solutions to keeping costs down. Two things that I would be urging this committee to explore are looking at amending zoning for municipal uses and shared buildings and shared uses. And I also believe that on a 13-member council, the council has many individuals that can serve these committees well and that no one individual should serve on multiple building committees. And I applaud Counselor Rooney for implying that if she is appointed to this, she may consider stepping down. But of the Jones Library Building Committee, I would have liked to see more than May before. So I'd like you to consider my nomination here.
Counselor Ryan?
So last time, my objection, my only objection was to Counselor Rooney's candidacy was that she was already on the Jones Library Building Committee. And I firmly believe with 13 counselors that we shouldn't have the same person on two different building committees. And hence, that's the reason I voted against her as a candidate. I think she's a good fit. I think both our, both of my colleagues would be excellent. But I like the fit that Counselor Rooney provides, her background and experience. I have no doubt that she will be very cost-conscious and be paying very close attention to the issues of budget. And I had a conversation, a communication with her after the meeting, and she assured me, as she's just said, that if she were put on this body, she would step off the Jones Library Building Committee. So on the basis of her word and her past experience, I am happy to vote for her with all due respect to my colleague. Counselor Hanke?
Andy?
Well, I appreciate Counselor Rooney's volunteering to step down from a committee. But I think that it's very important that she stay on the Library Building Committee. We're in a very precarious situation with that building because the cost factors have to be controlled very carefully in order to get where we want to go with what we can afford to do. And there are going to be potential changes that are going to come. And somebody who has the experience of being on that committee provides a very important role to play. This building is under construction, but the building committee's work is by far not done. And I guess the other thing that I would sort of just share is that, you know, of all my service on all sorts of different committees, the one I never had the opportunity to be on and have some regret about is a building committee. And so be it. But I think that it is of value to have as many different people being able to take on that role. And that there's many types of expertise that can contribute. I find, having worked with Counselor Hanke for all of the time that I've been on the council, that she's a counselor who's very conscientious, very thorough, very willing to learn, spend time to learn, and to delve into technical things that can kind of astound me at times, just to the depth to which she becomes involved. And so for that reason, it's tough. We have two good people who are asking. But I think that it is time to give Counselor Hanke that opportunity. And I'm going to continue to support that vote that I made in the last meeting.
Anna?
I don't have a statement. I actually have a question I'd like to hear from both of the folks who are interested in this. I'd like to hear from each of you how you plan to keep the council abreast of what's going on with this project, should you be appointed. I am concerned with appointing an individual versus appointing a representative. We are appointing someone who is the council representative on this committee, not someone who is only bringing their own perspective and expertise, right? And so I, my concerns, Pam, are with, with your appointment here is that I don't feel that we've heard much from you as Jones liaison. And I recognize that there have been, as liaison to that building committee, I recognize that there have been gaps in meetings. And so I'd like to hear from you about how you plan to report back to us, because I think that that is my primary concern. And I'd like to hear how you're going to take the council's thoughts into consideration in this project, not just your own thoughts on the cost or the budgetary implications, but how are you going to hear from us? This is one where, again, this is a council representative, meaning the council should still be able to share with our liaison our thoughts, and those should still be taken into consideration. So I'm, I would love to hear from both of the candidates for this appointment, if that's okay.
Let me finish the comments, and then I'll ask the candidates to answer your questions. Kathy?
As people know, from the last time we went through this, I was, I'm a strong supporter of Pam. One of the things I left that meeting with is the memory that Paul, when he first showed us this charge, there were two counselors on it. And I actually think that Pam and Mandy have very complementary skills. The focus on cost was critical in the elementary school as we went through it. And it forced trade-offs. With, while not, we had a criteria that it wouldn't in any way undermine the longevity of the building or the ability to teach children in it. So it was more, they weren't cosmetic, but it was more, how expensive or inexpensive would the curbing be in the driveway? And it turns out that was thousands of dollars. So it wasn't an odd question. So I think they're complementary skills, and I'm not sure how I reconcile. So actually, Paul, I'm not sure why you narrowed it to one. But in terms of reporting back, I was asked the same question, Anna. And at least at the very beginning, I gave written, more comprehensive reports when we were going into a lot of the detail. And since then, they've become, things are going well, thank you very much. But tonight, I'll talk about it a little bit more. But I was asked explicitly by the council, once I was appointed, that the council be given a sense of the difficult choices we were facing, not just a, we met and we did the following things. So I, too, think that that's important. And that's all I'm gonna say right now.
Anna, first of all, I want to thank you for asking that question. And let me just say, to me, building committees, you do not need to be a construction expert. More importantly, and Kathy, I don't think, maybe you built a house at some point, but I don't think you ever built a building until you did this, until we've done the school. And I think everybody would recognize that you've done an outstanding job in leading that team to the beautiful building we are seeing today. Having been on both the two committees that looked at fire stations and this one committee that looked at DPW, I actually have some construction experience. And I've actually overseen projects. And I've actually had an owner's project manager report to me. While I was trying to say to them, no, you're not going to redo that bathroom because it was done five years ago, and you don't need to redo that bathroom. To me, the issue that we need more than anything else is cost control. And I'm very concerned because I, as much as maybe the solution would be two counselors, particularly since you never know when one counselor may not continue on the council and therefore doesn't continue on the committee. But I, to me, the issue that I am interested in is the question that Anna has asked. So I'm going to reverse the order. I'm going to ask Counselor Hanke to answer that question first, and then we'll go to Pam Rooney.
I would definitely take my lead from Kathy Shane and how she handled it with the elementary school building committee in some sense, because she kept us very well informed. But she also met with many counselors when big decisions were coming up to get their thoughts. She surveyed us, she emailed us, she presented at council meetings, she asked- for feedback. She said, email me if you have any questions or anything you want to say. I would take that as a lead. I think I have some, over the seven years I've been on the council, I think counselors can see that I've done that in other manners. When I was Chair of CRC, I would regularly say, we're coming up with a hearing on this or a decision on that. Counselors, any counselor that has a question, email it to me, and I will make sure it is asked. I didn't just rely on the five members of the CRC committee. I would regularly ask counselors. As a member of the MMA Policy Committee, when a agenda comes up, the council hasn't seen it much because it's not a lot to do with the council. But Paul can attest that when a question comes up regarding a specific thing related to town municipal operations, whether it be marijuana, whether it be the ADUs, whether it be something dealing with tax titling or other things, if we're asked to comment, many times I email Paul and say, hey, or I'll email Nate, or I'll email someone else in the, in the staffing with Paul knowing and saying, hey, we're supposed to comment on this. I know nothing about that. Does someone on the staff have a question or a thought on that particular bill or anything that I can relay to the MMA Committee? So I think I've shown that I can do it when the council wants it done, when they need it done, and when it needs to be done, even if they haven't asked. And that's what I would continue to do.
Thank you. Pam?
Thank you. And, and Mandy is certainly good for her word because she communicates well. I, I do appreciate that question. In the terms of the, the Jones Library Building Committee, obviously, I was not on that committee during the formative process. And there were dozens of questions that I would have liked to have asked of that, of that project, of that, the effort to program the kind of space that they thought that they needed. I would have, I would have had, I would have had a lot of questions on, on was space critical? And did we need to construct that kind of square footage? I, I do have a, an example. In one of my federal projects, we were, we had a low bidder. The low bidder actually ended up going to jail. And myself and my contracting officer managed to pull the pieces of the contract together to get the project finished. And it was, it was negotiating every single addition, every, every minor change of scope in order to keep the project within the budget that we had, that we had available. I am a pretty frugal New Englander who does not like to see money spent on superfluous materials and/or space. And my, my goal has always been to get the most out of a project for the least amount of money. So that, I would share that with Mandy Jo Hanke in my goal for this project. The efficiency and effectiveness is simply something that I have been thinking about in my, in my career, in, in four or five different roles across the career, which may not be a requirement for somebody on this committee. But I think it's a really good basis for asking the questions, for crafting the, the program of what's to be built, and testing, testing the requirements, testing the requests, basically testing needs versus wants at every single stage. And just having that background, just understanding it. I may not be the only person that can do it, but I feel it is, it is in my alley. And it puts me in a really good spot to ask the right questions. And I think that's, that's the role. In terms of communicating back to the, the council, I think there, one very large question has already been answered, and that is, where is the site for the DPW? And that was certainly going to be one of the, the major elements that the committee would have to deal with, that, that has been bypassed. The, I am, I am delighted to think about reporting back on decisions that could be made. What are the elements that are going to be included on one site? What are the elements that the council feels are appropriate to be housed at different locations around town? So those are just two examples that come to my mind of what council feedback would be really important on. So, thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments? Then we are going to do what we did last time, and that is, when I call your name, please state your counsel, your first choice. Okay. And in this case, we will begin with Pam Rooney.
Yes. Is that how we're voting?
You have to name, name the counselor.
Oh, Pam Rooney would vote for Pam Rooney.
Okay. George Ryan. Counselor Ryan.
Rooney.
Kathy Shane.
Rooney.
Andy Steinberg.
Hanke.
Pat DeAngelis. Anna Devlin-Gothier.
Hanke.
Counselor Ette.
Rooney.
Lynn Griesmer is Hanke. Counselor Hanke.
Hanke.
Bob Hegner.
Rooney.
Counselor Lord.
Rooney.
The vote is six in favor of Rooney and five in favor of Counselor Hanke. At this point, do we assume that it is Counselor Rooney?
There needs to be a formal motion.
Okay. Pam, you have your hand up.
I was going to resign from the Jones Library Building Committee, if that's appropriate at this moment.
You'll need to put that in writing, and we'll need to put that on the next agenda.
Okay, thank you.
It doesn't, point of order, it doesn't go on a council agenda. It goes to the town clerk's office. That's where the resignations are filed.
I'm sorry, the resignation goes to the town clerk's office. The recommendation to the town manager as to who the council wants to put on that committee will come up at the next agenda. Counselor Ryan?
So I understand we need a further motion? Is that correct?
Yes.
And so the motion would be to appoint Counselor Rooney to the DPW. No, I'm sorry. Correct me, please.
To recommend the town manager appoint.
To recommend the town manager appoint Counselor Rooney to the DPW Building Committee.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Then we're going to move to a vote. And we'll begin with Counselor Ryan.
Aye.
Kathy Shane.
Yes.
Andy Steinberg.
Aye.
Pat DeAngelis.
No.
Anna Devlin-Gothier.
Aye.
Counselor Ette.
Aye.
Lynn Griesmer is an aye. Counselor Hanke.
Aye.
Bob Hegner.
Aye.
Counselor Lord.
Aye.
And Pam Rooney.
Yes.
The vote's eleven, no, ten in favor of Rooney and one opposed. We are going to move on to the rest of the agenda.
I have a quick question.
Yes. I'm sorry.
It was discussed possibly about having two? Would that be a town manager discussion?
That would be a town manager decision. He would have to come back with a modified charge, which would include a modification in the committee, and ask the council for another recommendation. Counselor Ryan, did you have your hand up? I'm sorry, Pat.
I'll just, I just put it up. Paul, we had two people on the elementary school building committee, Counselor Walker and Counselor Shane. So I'm interested in why you slimmed it to one.
So there's one on the library building committee, and that was the model. That's a municipal building project, and that's why I did that. And also, there's a number of people out there who I think will be very beneficial to serve on the committee. I've listened to the council's discussion tonight, and we'll look at it. But, but I think that having one counselor is really the right way to go.
Say that a last part again.
Having a count, one counselor on it is the right way to go, so that there's a broader representation from other members of the community.
Pat, you still have your hand up. I'm assuming you just need to take it down. Okay. We're going to go to committee and liaison reports. BCG, there's no report. Community Resources Committee, Pam Rooney.
Thank you. The Committee, Community Resource Committee met last week and opened the hearings on Article Five, which is accessory, accessory uses, and Article Fifteen, which is inclusionary zoning, one being fees in lieu of construction of affordable housing, the other one being accessory dwelling units. Both of those were continued to our next meeting, which is August twenty-two. I think Lynn mentioned August twenty-eight, but it's actually August, excuse me, I think she mentioned twenty-two. It's actually August twenty-eight that our meeting occurs. Thank you. And we, again, as always, welcome input from others. We had, we had zero people in the audience for the latter half of that meeting. So that, that's not a well-represented public hearing.
Elementary School Building Committee, Kathy?
Met, we met last Friday, and rather than it be the normal, just exciting news that the building is construction, being instructed, and new pictures, and we've been posting those, that still was part of the news. We're on track. And there's actually bricks on the outside of the building now, which, a big relief to those of us who chose the color of the bricks. I still like them. And, you know, one of the designer brought the original bricks we were choosing to prove that these were the bricks we chose. But the, the issue that came up, and it was really, you know, within a couple days before we were meeting, is the material that was our preferred choice for covering the playground is turning out to not be viable. There was a new material called corkine that's mainly out of cork that had all sorts of terrific properties. It, you, when you fall on it, you don't thud, you bounce, it's resilient, it's permeable, water goes through, and it doesn't have toxic substances in the top or underneath it. What's turned out, it's new to the United States and not at all used in New England. And there's one elementary school that embarked on being the guinea pig for the rest of us. And they've had, within a few months, had to tear out everything that was reinstalled, or most of it, because the installation was failing. They're getting it reinstalled by a different installer. It's been difficult to reach the parent company here in the United States, get them to respond to us when we were asking questions. Our OPM reached someone in Europe who called and said, won't you get the US arm to return the phone calls? So we, we are likely having to shift to consider an alternative surface, and it's going to be a tough choice. So we had a lot of discussion about, this may be viable. It's in Texas, and it's in California, but we're not sure yet it would even work in New England. And the experience with installer shifting, and they don't warranty it past five years. So it was failing within one year. So it's also expensive and high-risk. So the next meeting is September twelfth, and we will have to make a decision. And it's going to be an uncomfortable one, because there isn't probably another surface that meets everybody's. This would be the perfect solution. So we'll, we'll have to make some decisions about it. The playground is due to be installed in April. So we're not in a, let's just think about this for a few more months world. We, we, we're going to have to make a decision. So that, that was the substance. The meeting went on much longer than usual. And just, for those of you who haven't followed this, and I wrote it up when we were first were having this discussion, the, the material that's at Kensington Park, the material that's at Groff Park is board and place rubber. And it has all sorts of really nice properties to it. It has good longevity. Underneath the surface, though, are ground-up tires. And they do have some chemicals and other substances in them. And the Conservation Commission had said, you can't put it at Fort River because of the high water table and the runoff into the Fort River. So their concern was about the water runoff that would be going through the underneath of this. So they initially completely fine with corkine, and there's some others. So that's, that's the issue that we were wrestling with on Friday last week, and will be having to make a choice on September twelfth.
And you now know more about playground surfaces than you ever expected to know. That's an example of a building committee person. Okay. Are there any questions or comments for that one? Okay, moving on. Finance Committee, Kathy?
The Finance Committee has not met since the last council meeting. We are meeting tomorrow. And the single action item on the agenda is the referral that the council just made for the, the study. The other item, we have a new member, but we're going to be reviewing the fall schedule. You know, what, what do we have in front of us and timing of it? So it's more of a, just a group discussion. I think everyone knows that Finance Department of the town is a little short-staffed right now. So we're, we're trying to be as non-staffed intensive as we can for tomorrow. The next meeting of finance, September second, we'll be getting back into more concrete, trying to look forward to budget guidelines. If people remember how long it's been taking us to get through guidelines this year, we'll probably be a tough lift.
GOL, Anna?
Sorry. So GOL is currently in the process of working on the town manager evaluation. That will be coming back to the council very shockingly soon. And so at our last meeting, I had drafted up, based on the feedback, I drafted for the committee to review sort of a, a example for us to utilize. And I'm currently in the process of turning that into a form, so we can actually see what it would look like for the council, once it is ultimately passed. So GOL has been working on that, in addition to our normal proclamations and resolutions. I did want to mention, there are a couple things that GOL is still waiting on, word back from KP Law about. And so we have not been able to move those items forward, including the Transportation and Parking Commission and the public ways policy. GOL typically waits to hear back from KP Law, so that we don't have to repeat work once we get those comments back. So we're waiting on those. And then I, as I understand it, there are a couple other things that are in other committees that will be coming our way. So we've been keeping busy there. GOL also, at our last meeting, sought to find the pool for the Charter Review Committee substantial and ready to move forward, and was not able to do so. So we are continuing to seek folks to submit a community activity form for the Charter Review Committee. We have two currently. And so we are planning to also hopefully meet with that committee to talk through their, their needs, and ideally what we can do to, to drum up interest. But please, please encourage your networks to submit a CAF, a community activity form for Charter Review, so we can move that process forward. And then lastly, last homework assignment for you all is, if you have any proposed changes to the rules of procedure, this is just my standing reminder, if you have any proposed changes to the rules of procedure, please send those to me in a track changes form or with exact wording. GOL will, will absolutely discuss those. But please don't send me abstract thoughts about, I'd like to shift something to, to make this better. Please send me how you would like it to change in exact wording for GOL to discuss. Kathy?
I, I have a question on the last part of it. I do have a specific, and it's in committee makeup. And so if you, if you send me a word version, I could do track changes, but I can also send specific wording on it. And it's something I was also going to do. And it's something I was also going to send to the Charter Review Commission, but I realized we can do it in our rules. It doesn't require change of the charter to make a change. So then I do have a question on the Charter Review. My understanding is there were at least a few who had applied and then weren't recommended, that were continuing to be interested. In fact, I had emails from them after we came. Do you have some that have come back to you and said, yes, I'm still interested? Do you have at least a few, or are you just saying you don't have enough?
We have two who have indicated interest and that the GOL was not able to find that to be enough. And it's not just numbers, right? Folks are looking at whether that candidate pool fully meets the needs for... What's the word that I'm looking for? Someone, not substantial. The word that's right here in my brain and isn't coming here. Efficient, thank you. So yeah, so we have two CAFs. Trying to figure out, I can't share who they are from, but yes.
Well, it was sent to all of us. The Chair of the Committee really requested that if there's anyone out there who's been following it and seems to be well-involved, move as quickly as possible. So I just was curious whether we at least had some applicants this time. So thank you.
We're going to move on to, I'm sorry, I flipped the page. Jones Library Building Committee, Pam.
Thank you. The report from the committee or to the committee was on the transfer of money from the library to the town. It included the $1.1 million HUD grant, which finally came through to everyone's enormous relief. The $500,000 that is coming from the Woodbury account, which the library manages, and then $450,000 of private funding that has come in. Thank you. And Paul may be able to add more to that. Paul?
I can't. I wasn't at the last meeting. It was last week. I don't think Counselor Rooney was there either.
Okay, TSO, Andy.
Really don't have much to add to reports that have already been provided in writing. Tonight was originally thought we would have the discussion on the recommendation regarding Heatherstone and whether to continue with the current roundabouts or move in the direction of removing them and replacing with other traffic calming as recommended by the committee. It's really the president who can answer, but did inform me that it would not be tonight because there was plans to get additional information for the council to enhance the discussion when it comes to the council. So that's basically where we are with pending issues.
Kathy?
Yeah, I just have, I guess, a question slash comment. I completely agree with the recommendation of removal, and I saw in your report, what's the alternative? Knowing people over there, they said they always wanted speed humps. They never wanted to be the trial balloon for the mini splits. So couldn't we, and this is a request back to DPW, if we remove them, couldn't we remove them and right away put in a hump? Whether it's two humps or three, I don't know, you know, what's needed there just to slow the traffic down. And I don't know whether the term is bump, hump, ramp, platform, but just something that goes up a little bit and comes down, because the slightest amount of that slows cars down. You don't need a lot. So there's a concern that they get ripped off out of a beautiful road that finally doesn't have holes in it, and then we have a hole where the roundabout used to be. So I think it would be good to get a commitment to take them out, which Guilford had said would be easy, in quotes, and put something in right away, you know, just sort of almost in the same. So that's a request. Could that happen? That would be a nice response to what people have been worried about.
By the way, the purpose, the reason for the delay is, in fact, the clerk of the council has asked Guilford to prepare a memo that talks about the cost of removal, the alternatives, and the timeline to make those alternatives available and the cost.
Okay, so that might be why you did it, but I just think the, you know, people don't necessarily want them, but they don't want to get back to a throughway now that the median is gone, because that road was reconfigured. It used to have grass strip down it, and that opened it up.
Right, definitely. Pat D'Angelo.
To comment on the fact that humps, whether they're small or large, cause problems with snow removal and road clearing in the winter. And that certainly would contribute to the destruction, redestruction of a road that's finally repaired. So I don't, so it really needs to, we really need a discussion with DPW. I agree with that, but not with your...
Right. Any other questions of TSO? Are there any liaison reports? Pat?
I have a quick one. I sat on the Board of Health for the very first time as liaison. And the biggest concern in the meeting was the RFP for a waste hauler, and they're hoping for some kind of update or understanding about the need for consultant. And you can probably contact them directly, but if you'd see me on that as well, I'd appreciate it, Paul. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions on committees or liaisons? Seeing none? Oh, Anna, I'm sorry.
That's okay. So it was early in the beginning and kind of happened so fast regarding BCG. Given the challenges that we know we will be facing, given that finance would like to start work sooner rather than later on budget guidelines, and given BCG's charge, which is to also draft their own set of budget guidelines, I'm curious if the town manager and the Chair of BCG have any intention of calling a meeting of the Budget Coordinating Group in the near future.
We've not discussed it, but can in the near future. Paul?
Yeah, we have not had that conversation. Right now, I think our Finance Department is understaffed until our new Finance Director comes in in October, which is the latest he'll get here. I think that that's, we need to get him here before we can have that meeting.
I'll speak for myself, but I would appreciate if that conversation could happen sooner rather than later. Thank you.
Okay, Town Managers Report.
Thank you. So first off, thank you for approving the appointment of Lisa Borchetta as our Director of Senior Services. I think she's going to be a tremendous addition to the town. She's very excited about taking on the job and is in the process of saying her farewells in her current community and then will relocate here to serve the town and the seniors in our town. And on the other side, we were sad to say farewell to Holly Drake over 26 years of service to the town. Her last day was Friday, and she made a career change decision for herself, and I fully support it because it was something that she really felt she needed to do. But we have a ton of knowledge and experience and just strength of decision-making that's walking out the door, so it's very sad to see her go. If you didn't notice, there's a lot of paving going on in the center of town. Yes, they made very quick progress. They actually have the first coat on today. So they will not be here the rest of the week. We've outlined the striping and parking will be available this entire week and then through the weekend, which is when the fair is going to be in town, and making sure that we open up as many parking spaces as possible downtown. So the next phase is to raise the structures, manhole covers, things like that, and also to work on the handicap access crosswalks. Then they'll come back in a few weeks probably to do the final coat and the final painting of it, so we'll have a fresh, new paving downtown. In addition to that, there'll be additional paving, starting up with the same company, probably after Labor Day with all the streets that we've talked about previously, including Bay Road and some of these other streets that we have listed. And then there's additional work being done on Potline. I think that's winding up in terms of replacing culverts, and that group is going to be moving over to Middle Street to replace a culvert over there. So more construction. We're in touch with the Soccer Association. I think we'll be out of there before soccer practice and games start on Potline. So a lot of construction going on in our roads this fall. And there's just a lot of construction going on. You know, Kathy referenced the Fort River School, the corkine. You know, that was a recommendation or decision by the Building Committee that our designer would not recommend, and we had to give them a liability waiver to spec it. So I think, you know, credit to Bob Parent, who has been going out doing due diligence, looking at an actual installation in eastern Massachusetts and talking to people and talking to installers, talking to the companies, talking to as many people as he possibly can. So I think we dodged a bullet on that one, actually. And so now the committee has to think about, well, what do we do instead? Because the Conservation Commission, as Kathy said, does not want poured-in-place rubber, which is what the designers had recommended and what's used in most playgrounds. So the alternative is, they don't call it wood chips, they call it...
Engineered wood fiber.
Yeah, engineered wood fiber. And our biggest concern is with handicap accessibility to the playground equipment. And so there's a balancing act that's going to have to happen with that. The library is making progress as well. You know, they haven't really started the real demolition, but they've been doing all the preservation inside the building. I think they released some photographs by the contractor on that. Centennial Water Treatment Plant is nearing completion. They need to, you know, within, you know, it probably won't be fully functional and online until in early 2026, but it's nearing completion, and really, that's a really important project for the town, even though it's out of sight, out of mind. It's in the town of Pelham, but it's going to really, for the next half a century, will really serve the town well as a major asset for the town in terms of our water. The Roundabout, or no, it's the Track and Field. I'm not sure if you've been over to the Track and Field. We walked it today. It's just, it's very large. It's on budget, it's on track. So...
It's okay.
It's the reconfiguration, the reorientation makes it look bigger for some reason, but there'll be another field that will be adjacent to it. There'll be a lot of management issues that come up with it in terms of preserving the track and the field because it's a grass field. It can't be used for probably until next year, most likely. But it's going to be a magnificent field and track. Then I think as soon as we finish that, people are going to say, well, what about the stands? What about this? What about that? There's going to be, you know, we'll want other improvements to make. It was a sort of a bare-bones design. So, you know, looking at all the things and trying to make as good a decisions as possible to move that forward. The Roundabout at Amity Street and U Drive, University Drive, the bids come back this week. So once those bids come back, we'll know who the contractor is going to be. They'll be able to give us some guidance in terms of what their schedule is going to be, in terms of doing the work. Probably some work will be done this fall, and the rest will be done in the spring. So just sort of, I think for the town, we're in a building boom right now with a lot of staff devoting a lot of time to creating buildings and new infrastructure for the town. So I think it's a real, and we're queuing some other things up with the, if the council approves the money for the wastewater treatment facility, getting that plan laid out. So we're lining things up as we move forward. So I think it's really good news. There's, you know, I appreciate the cooperation with the bid and the chamber in terms of communicating with our local businesses. It's a hardship. You know, we wish we could have started a couple of weeks early, but the money doesn't become available till July one. Our business is pretty understanding about that. A lot of times it's kind of slow the first couple of weeks of August. And so we hope to be out of the downtown area, like with the next three weeks and have it completed. So three or four weeks, whatever that is. So, but I just want to thank the bid and the chamber for helping to, you know, walk door-to-door, talk to business owners, share out information, what to expect, and so it's been a real team effort on that.
Are there questions of the town council, town manager? Yes, Bob Hegner.
I have two questions. One is, it would be helpful to get a briefing, maybe in TSO, on what the town intends to do with the additional road money that we got from the state. And secondly, it's awfully dry and hot. I mean, the weeds that are growing in my backyard are wilting under the drought and the heat. Do you anticipate there being a drought warning or drought issued for western Mass?
So we have not, we are not in a drought, oddly enough, even though we have not had rain for such a long period of time. So, and our water supplies are pretty ample right now. So in terms of the town of Amherst, you know, we always look, monitor our water supplies very closely at this time of year in anticipation of the students coming back. But we're pretty much topped off on everything, so we're in pretty good shape. It's the state that declares the drought, and that triggers certain activities, which is, you know, watering on odd number of days and things like that. So right now, we're in pretty good shape.
Okay, thank you.
Kathy?
I just could have, I have two questions, totally unrelated. Bob mentioned the additional road model. I think it would be good if we put out some notice that we got almost $1.5 million, Chapter 90. And one of the things I'm hoping we can bring up at Finance or maybe TSO, that plus the 750 that we put aside out of our own capital. Some sense of, that's over, well, just barely over 2 million, but does that, that's money that's available for this fiscal year, but the question is like, how quickly can you move it? Because I know you have some planning in advance, but just some sense of where that goes with that amount of money. And am I right? It's just, it's hard to, I had to search to find the Chapter 90, but the nice thing that the state did this time is they did the extra from fair share plus regular 90, and our legislator staff reps worked hard to get mileage to matter, so we got a big bump up. So that's question number one, and then I'll do two, and I alerted Paul to this. I think it would be good for the council to hear and the public to hear, whether it's at the next meeting, council meeting, the one after, when will we be seeing a bump up in our property taxes as the financing for the school starts to pull money? So it wasn't in the last property tax, the announcement that we got for July first half of this year. So will we see it in the second half of the year? So just to report back on when people will be seeing that. So the public knows it's coming on some level. And I don't expect you to answer the second one now, but just some sense once you look at the numbers. Thanks.
Sure, and we can get that for you. And then as terms of the paving, I believe we did pay, we did bid out two years' worth of paving. So we can just accelerate that contract, depending on the contractor expecting, was expecting to do that next year. But we can look at, with the new money, if we can move that forward quicker.
Counselor Ete.
So in the section on the DEI Department, you mentioned that the DEI Department is taking on the responsibility for the new Amherst Black Reparations Committee. I was hoping you could expand on what you mean.
So when we have a new committee, we have a lot of new committees that are forming up right now. We usually assign a staff person to support that committee. And so for that committee, it'll be either that, usually the DEI Department doesn't designate a person. They take it on as a department, and either the director or the assistant director will be the staff support and help with, you know, hosting meetings and helping with agenda setting with whoever the chair is and things like that.
Is there a follow-on? Paul, you and I have to... Paul, you and I have discussed. This actually was partly under future agenda items. But since it's town manager, under your goals is the goal that you have a conversation about roads and sidewalks and kind of a long term look. And you and I have talked about the fact that we would try to do that sometime in September or October. Do you want to talk about that or just at least give us a sense of what you're looking at?
Yeah, so our staff haven't given vacations and everything like that. You know, we're pulling people together this week or next to have our our internal team with Town Engineer and the TPW. And everybody actually foreman of sort of a broad range of people come in. The challenge is we haven't been investing enough money into our roads. That means the roads are crumbling faster, which puts pressure on our staff to fix potholes. And then the residents get upset and then they call and sometimes are very upset to the people who are refilling the calls. And so there's a whole, it's a cascading event. And so what our goal is to try and fix those things along the way, but also to get a rational plan that the council can consider in terms of the kinds of investment we would need to make in roads to get us to where I think the community expects us to be on our condition of our roads.
And and can I assume that in that discussion would not only be roads but sidewalks? And also the look at what's underneath the roads? In other words, any sewer replacements and stuff like.
So that goes without saying. I mean, everything.
Yeah.
You will. You will see some work that isn't road money. It's actually water and sewer money because they have to fix the the sewer lines. We don't open up a road unless we know we're doing what's underneath it, what what the condition of those pipes are. So the beauty of this project up here is there weren't any, there wasn't any water or sewer that had to be done. Whereas Northampton Road had a pretty significant investment of of water and sewer.
Thank you. And we'll keep the council informed as to when that conversation is going to take place. George, Councilor Ryan.
Just following up, that that is something that would be presented to the council as a whole?
Yes.
And not TSO?
Not just TSO. It might. There might be a referral to TSO, but the council as a whole. It's in it's in part of the town manager goals as well. But I think, given the high interest of the public in this very issue, it's important that we do it at a council meeting. Bob Hegner.
Yeah, I just wanted to to mention or to to thank DPW. They've done a pretty good job of sealing and, you know, patching holes and things, at least on the roads, the streets where I drive on. And it's noticeable. So there obviously was an effort to get that work done and and I appreciate that.
Thank you, Bob. I've heard compliments about the patching this year as well. As well as many other emails about roads. Are there any other questions or comments for the town manager? Pat?
Yes, Todd, the gentleman who spoke about having a library garbage can came into the Survival Center on Friday and showed me a picture of the new can that DPW put there. And he's happily bringing things from Mill River and other places to keep our town clean. And he was very moved by the quick response.
Yes, he was very passionate about it and appreciate what he was doing for the community. It happened to align with our priorities for trash cans. It was on an existing route, so we don't our trash truck didn't have to deviate and create a new lot. And also we tried to put trash cans adjacent to bus stops. And so it's a perfect location. And it's just something we he we should have noticed it before. So appreciated him bring it to our attention.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments? Seeing none, we'll go to the town council comments. I've submitted a written report. It covers basically a month and a half from beginning of July to the middle of August. In the report, I said I would give an oral report on the Regional School Fiscal Sustainability Group update. And so I'm going to do that. I reported at an earlier meeting on the school's intent to order a report from the Massachusetts Association of Rural Schools, otherwise known as MARS. While the data for this pub report is publicly available from predominantly the Mass Department of Revenue and some from the Mass Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, it is very important to the schools that this be gathered and presented by an independent source. That report has been ordered and paid for by the schools, but as of today, it has not been delivered. Thus, a potential meeting with the schools on August 11 was canceled. In addition, a preparation, a preparatory meeting with the chairs of the select boards of the three towns and myself as president of the council that was scheduled for today, August 18, was also canceled. However, in the process of process of discussing the Mars report with the superintendent on July 8, there was a misunderstanding by the Chair of the Pelham Select Board and myself regarding the amount that we were being asked to contribute to pay for the report. Thus, on Friday, August 15, Bob Agolia, Chair of the Pelham Select Board, Pat Duffy, Chair of the Leverett Select Board, and I were able to meet with the Chair of the Regional School Committee, the School Superintendent and Sharon Bernachi, their Finance Director. Melissa Makepeace, Chair of the Chutesbury Select Board, was unable to join us. As an aside, the report cost was a total of $32,000 or $800 per municipality. We were under the impression that the total cost was 950, to which we would contribute about 150 to 200. At the meeting this past Friday, Bob and Agolia and I both apologized for our misunderstanding regarding the cost of the Mars report. This seemed to go a long way to reestablishing a positive tone with the group. Individually, Bob and I also have talked about whether or not we might make a modest contribution from the town. It was at the this meeting this past Friday that we agreed to cancel the meeting today. However, the rest of the 30 minute conference call was spent establishing a general understanding about the next two meetings. Meeting one. This is based on the independent, on the deep, is on the dependent of our willingness of the Pelham School Committee that the first meeting may occur. It has not been scheduled. It's not been confirmed. But it may occur as early as Tuesday, September 2 at 5 o'clock or soon after. The focus of this meeting would be to have the Mars staff present the report to the Joint Committee of the Regional School Committee, Amherst School Committee and the Pelham School Committee. It would be a public meeting and all are welcome and we are truly encouraged to attend. This is similar to the manner in which the school committee held the discussion with DESI regarding the regional assessment method on March 31 of this year. That would just be a presentation of data. If there were clarifying questions, that would be all that would go on that night. The second meeting, after the schools and our group individually, including our governing bodies and our finance committees, have time to meet and prepare a statement of our take on the data, including additional data from the same sources, meaning DOR and DESI. We will have a joint meeting of representatives from the towns. This the council has already selected five people and the school committees. At that meeting, there will be time allocated for the schools to present their take on the report and for the towns to do the same. Clearly, the dark target date for this needs to be soon after the initial presentation. And of because, in fact, as we all know, we're rapidly approaching the first round of discussions that we usually have in maybe even as early as September for a preview preview look at the regional budget. With that, I'm going to ask if there are questions, comments and on this or anything else with regard to my report. Kathy.
Just a quick, when you were reading, when you read the 3200 too quickly and you said 32,000 as the report.
I'm thank you, 32,000.
So I'm just correcting it so people aren't stunned by the number. But it's it will mainly finance by the school right now with some contribution. But it is a report on each of the towns, so it's not just Amherst or. So I just wanted to correct that so people wouldn't be astonished.
Thank you. I appreciate that correction. Councilor Hanneke.
Two questions. Has there been a discussion of a potential date for the follow up meeting after the presentation on September 2?
There has not, but was requested that it be, we try to do within two weeks.
And are you looking at Saturdays or weeknights? Just calendar? Okay. And another question, do you have any idea what data? It it sounds like the school district or the superintendent themselves are the only ones that requested data. Do you know what data was requested, like which data points were requested? And did anyone else beyond the superintendent or the schools have any say in what data would be in this report?
Very good question. They provided us, and I believe I provided you all with an example of what Mars does, okay? And it is pretty much town revenue data and town data. It's very little on schools. And meantime, having looked at those two sources of data, there is much more data to be had. And we are, as a four towns group, are prepared to dig in and add that additional data back in as well. Because the the real once we verify that, in fact, we're all looking at the same tables and we're all getting the same data from the same sources, it seems that we should be able to add. In addition to that, we have also discovered, not surprisingly, since every town is still doing their closeouts, that the FY25 data is not is not there. And for each of our, because that that data doesn't get added. And until after the state certifies our closeout and our free cash. The interesting thing is, as we all know, Chutesbury, Leverett and Pelham all paid a significant amount more toward the regional schools this last year. So for example, I know Councilor Han, Councilor Steinberg has periodically talked about the excess tax capacity of individual towns, the other, the other towns. We have no excess tax capacity. Pelham, for example, now calculates that of their excess town cap tax capacity after this past year, they only have $150,000 left. So that they are eating rapidly into their tax capacity. And two of the towns, in addition to that issue, have just been hit or are going to be hit as of October 1 with this very difficult fight insurance situation that has been happened with, if you belong to the Hampshire County group. So two of the towns will have to have special townfall meetings to figure out what they're going to do about that. What it does is it basically it puts all four of us in similar situations. I wish I had better answers for you and we're diplomatically trying to push for them. Andy.
I think that I have one question or concern. And that is that if we're using as data comparison to three towns that are significantly different from the city, none as the town of Amherst, but really as a city, that it is a very different set of circumstances. And when I've looked at data and compared to neighboring communities that are more similar towers in size and the demands on our government, Northampton, Greenfield, those kinds of communities give a very different set of circumstances for comparison. And so I'm wondering how this process is looking at Amherst and what it is comparing Amherst to in our ability to do more or or expect more. And specifically, when I was looking at the question of how each town is doing as far as how much more it is providing in funding for education above the minimum expectation that is set up through the Chapter 70 formula system. Amherst is way ahead of those peer communities like Northampton and Greenfield, which means we're doing a lot more for our schools than they are as far as funding is concerned, which gets back to what are we not funding? And, you know, the questions, even the simplest, what can we do for our roads? So I think that there's some really substantial questions that need to be looked at. And I hope that the data that's being developed is something that is allowing a comparison, not just amongst four towns, but other communities that give a broader perspective on what the issues are.
The initial Mars data will not go beyond the four towns. Beyond that, however, there is a ton of additional access and analysis being done that allows us to look at cities that are more comparable to Amherst. But it's not. The conversation just hasn't advanced that far. It's advanced that far among the four towns, but not with the schools. Anna.
I apologize if I'm missing it. Lynn, you had said you had sent us something regarding the Mars, the Mars report or the Mars data. I know we don't have it yet, but I'm not able. What?
Been a while, so let me resend it.
Thank you. That would be helpful.
Yeah, absolutely. Are there any other questions or comments on this or anything else in the town in the President's Report? Let me just mention, I did contact Lori Goldner. They did provide testimony with regard to the environmental bills. And basically, the testimony basically just said that they supported. So there wasn't anything specific. In the report, you will see that I did provide you with the testimony that I gave with regard to the creation of a municipal building fund that would be like an MSBA or a MS or Board of Library Commissioners. Okay. Are there any other questions or comments with regard to future? Yes, Pam Rooney.
Thank you. I appreciated the the notice that you sent us in your report about the progress on the pilot calculations that that Joe Comford and Mindy Dom have helped sponsor and really appreciated. At least knowing that it's now under consideration and review, even if it may not necessarily affect us in a way that we might want because of our institutional buildings value on land in Amherst. But thank you.
One of the things that I believe is promising about the fact that there is a commission. And while the issue right now may not include publicly owned land that has higher ed institutions on it, it the commission is not barred from looking at that. And it is clearly the time, because once you open the formula, you need to open it once because you won't open it again for at least another 10 or 20 years. So. Any other questions or comments? Andy and I, by the way, have been having several conversations about that. Seeing none, let me just mention, and you did get a preview of this from various committee chairs. On the September 8, we'll have a public forum on the wastewater treatment proposal borrowing. We have a poll hearing for U Drive and Amity Roundabout. There hopefully there'll be a vote on the borrowing for the wastewater treatment plant. I believe the U Drive easement is separate, Paul. Is that correct? Okay, and that still needs to come up. If we're, if we have the information for the Heatherstone Mini Roundabouts, we will bring that forward. We are also trying to schedule an update on Hickory Ridge. Autumn mentioned and has done a terrific job of leading a council discussion, a GOL discussion. on town manager evaluation. She also mentioned rules of procedure. There, we are waiting at GOL for the Transportation and Parking Commission and the Public Ways Policy. And there's also been a request from a council who's unable to join us tonight for an update on the Jones Library Building fundraising. And we may have some town, more town manager appointments. I want to mention, for those of us that have done closeouts of council years in the past, this is beginning to frighten me because in the past, we've stacked up everything into November and December. And so all I can say is keep your Mondays clear because we may have to schedule some additional meetings to get everything done. Are there any other council comments or requests? Seeing none, I'm going to make a motion to adjourn and seek a second.
Second.
All right, we'll begin the vote with Pam, no, actually with Kathy Shane.
Yes.
Andy Steinberg.
Yes.
Pat DeAngelis.
Aye.
Anna Devlin-Gothier.
Aye.
Councilor Ette.
Aye.
Lynn Greasman, aye. Councilor Hanke.
Aye.
Bob Hegner.
Yes.
Councilor Lord. Pam Rooney.
Aye.
Councilor Ryan.
Aye.
It's unanimous, the meeting's adjourned, it's 9:01.